Speaker.
Not me, not me. I cannot blame that. But the other point of this resolution is to say, can we work together? Can we work together? Because our city needs us in the quality. And leaving itself and asking those opposition parties that don't think how to act like that, to look again. Because it isn't even in your interest as a party to behave in the way you have in the past. And if you want a better future for yourself, never mind the city, now is the time to turn over when you need it.
I've got four more speakers who've indicated they'd like to speak on this motion. And then I'll be someone who can give a couple of comments. Thinking about amendments to the whole thing. Uh, councillor.
Sorry, sorry. We've got, well, there's also that you've got your attention. I mean, I'm a local fifteen minutes, so I don't know if I'm going to do this all day.
Okay, councillor.
Happy to hear you, Mayor. Um, it doesn't sound very happy. We've got a very positive, uh, motion, uh, here from Mayor, both of them there. Um, and what sounds like a petty amendment to that motion, but it's actually trying to take note some achievements. And let's move politics aside, not just by the politicians, but by the staff and the partners in the city. And we're sort of trying to ignore what they have done. The schools, the construction companies, the apprentices, the colleges, um, and the universities, the health providers. I don't think our legal services, our democratic services would allow us to include in a motion something that hasn't got evidence. It says six thousand new refurbished homes, twenty thousand jobs, fourteen new schools, five currently under construction, sixty seven acres of new and improved green and urban space, and twenty thousand new trees. I wish it actually had put an amendment in to say, and a new cruise liner town, though, every time a ship comes in, brings in one million pounds into the apartment. All the exhibition centre logo being built by the city. Auction art building becoming part of the city council. And it's now what, in excess of twenty five million, brings in over one million in rent and reduces our cost base by one point three million a year. It doesn't mention that, but it should have. Because that was some of the successes brought to us by the council, by the partners, by the staff, who've done a fantastic job in difficult times and have got hope, as said by our friend councillor Steve Mumpet, who we love, and celebration about what the city is doing together. It's part of my shit working. We're doing it well. Times are tough. Grant Thornton has told us that actually there is a cliff, but the city, if the budget goes away, is going in terms of providing management services, that we're not going to have enough money. And we need to do more and we need to be innovative. This motion is a statement of fact. It doesn't need any amendments. And actually, I would have thought it would have received unanimous approval right across the council, rather than playing tribal politics in the face of all the hard work done by our staff, our partners and politicians.
Councillor Sean.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, extremely, because the councillors have already said a lot of the things I intended to say around home and also around the growth of the city. But I think it's also extremely important at a time when the local government, for many years, has been slaughtered in the media and slaughtered by central government for mismanagement, uh, trying to actually say how were they wasteful, not just with money, but with resources, in showing in extremely difficult circumstances, how well local government does manage under pressure, how well local government can grow the economy even when their budget's being cut, and how well local government can actually draw together partners from the public, the private sector, and the third sector to put their city first and come together. And I think central government could take a really good lesson from local government, both here and around the country, about how you make sure your economy grows, but you also look after the most vulnerable. And I think that is really important. And I think that's something that the mayor has made each and every one of us as cabinet members, make sure that as well as grow the economy of this city, whatever portfolio we're in, we ensure that all of our policies actually protect the most vulnerable and give them hope and chances, whether it's in their educational achievements, their opportunities to arts and culture, or their chances for employment and skills. So I definitely oppose the motion. I think it's a childish motion. I think it doesn't recognise what all of us together as councillors want for our citizens. And I would ask all of the councillors to support the mayor's motion and if it's to be unanimous vote to show how we all really support local government and are proud of each and every one and others who achieve our goals.
Well, I'm quite happy to support the motion. I think it may have enhanced the ability to encourage all people's support motion, not to use it as a task to tackle opposition. I think that's good. Whether that's fair or unfair, I expect to accept both and be treated differently. Um, I think, um, I would actually agree with councillor Mills. I was warned this, there was any member who did actually jump to that. The health authority has been absolutely fantastic with work on taking some of the financial burdens off us. People like Salvation Army detective, take that assembly, honest compassion in my world. And I have to say, they've done a very good job from actually group services on a reduced budget. The housing association make terrific contribution to the children's services. Yes, uh, and I, you know, whereas I like to see some aspects of one, it doesn't stop us being objectified. And you were very fair and informative. I appreciate it. So I think if anything, um, the motion is, is, is a light touch of the confidence that could be put to table. I think the councillor Mumpet made a point. If things get tough, there's no point just concentrating more on the negatives, because we don't want to talk the city down. We don't want to talk the aspirations of the city down. I remember during the Hatton era, the administration there was so literal about government, where they'd actually put out so many negatives, you would not believe anybody had a job or a young person. They talked down people's aspirations. And I totally accept, even in the difficulty we're in, we've got to talk about the aspirations of the city. And we've got to encourage at every level, that's through more members, as more members in respect of the party. We've got to encourage investment, we've got to tackle the elites, we've got to tackle and encourage investors in our wards of communities. And we've got to encourage and support, and I think, I mean, I have a grievance to be with the council and without talking about reducing the councillors. I don't think our work will ever be as busy in the thirty three years I'm in as a councillor. And I'm not saying that with any party, Hatton, and saying that across the board. And I know, I spent four hours of my day yesterday trying to raise money to some volunteer groups in my boardroom to enable them to do some of the work in the one time we've been done as a statutory duty. And I'm not trying to focus, I'm just saying, that's all the contribution we all have value in it. And we should have value. And I think that's important. When we're having people who are talking about the city and talking about the local government, and I think it is the government, it's just to talk about the government, and before Scotland's abolition, there was an absolute swaying tone of councillors and councillors. I think we should actually take a lift of, someone who might think I would have a bit of a grudge against, Winston Churchill. Winston Churchill actually said, local government is the foundation of democracy, because it's the council that walks down the street, in the village and town, that people read about and can ask what to go along with. And I think there is an attack on councillors and the fact that houses in this chamber, and I really am appalled, at a time when all of us have got more to do with less facilities, that we have our role undermined by, I just think, by the public. I would also support the motion. I'm really not going to be dishonest, there were sixty five acres created or seventy two acres. I personally have my measurements taken. But what I do believe is we should talk up the city, we should talk up our unions, our nation, and our state's administration.
Councillor.
If you want to, if you want to give the, the, the vibe of opposition members, I think maybe not spend a little time tackling and a little time advising to many contributions, it's under the hand of, would be a way forward. Because I think we have to make a good job of fighting. That's what I think.
Councillor.
Um, yeah, I strongly object to, after the councillor Mumpet's comment there, he claimed we objected to, to asset transfer and held them up. I'm not just sort of a priority possibly, libraries for example, well, agreed with the local week, councillors were instrumental in helping set up the French group that was the only transfer happening to help run the library service in Seven Park Library, so I don't think that was a fair criticism. And you said that we objected to the creation of green space. Um, essentially, we protested against the destruction of green spaces, spaces like Seven Park, Bedouin, Walkley Park, it's a bit different.
Okay, so then, so that's what you talked about. That was already green space, so I don't think you can count that. Um, so just, just requesting councillor Mumpet draws those two, and claims against green fire. And just more generally, we strongly support the thrust of this motion. It's actually really, when the councillor came to the final section, he said what the councillors were doing, how we should be putting together work together. And I think that had a good express of what we need to do as a group of councillors. So that's why we think our members should stand, and the motion would still be very powerful, extremely strong message for the process of the councillors to send out.
Councillor.
Thank you, sir. Um, but people look like, end of, well, Mayor Anderson said, I listened to him a number of years ago, I agree with him then, I agree with him now. Um, the problem is that whilst I've been in council before, that historically, this city council should be remembered for what is a unprecedented fight against an unprecedented attack. As Steve quoted, in terms of conservatives, government's targeting of the approach to make themselves, if it had broken, it may well have broken for the sector. And the fact that we're still not just here, but for people who are wasted, terrible, and tragic achievements this is in vain, is an absolutely remarkable historical event. And to remove, hopefully be celebrated, people who died or end up. And probably perhaps at the moment is that whilst, I think, at the time we made the decision to cut statutory services by twenty five, non statutory services by twenty five, it's somewhat proved that the other. Okay, you managed to say this is quite basically said, non statutory services, get the other one. We, we did so with the vain hope that perhaps today, we were able to take that key more from them from, even as we said before, if the average, we received the average, but we have an extra eighty million, none of that happened. We have a, a foreign government in place, which still is out there on force and needs to form a good service. And we are forced, sadly, to, those who are most vulnerable. The motion, the main motion, talks about protecting the vulnerable amongst us. Um, and adult services sadly is not being protected in the way that we would hope. It is receiving its own fair share of the costs, but with due respect to council, that was done, approved by a meeting before, against sophistication and scarcity, it's not looking at the number of people who are upon, who lose adult social care provision. We need to look at comparing that to other services, right, costs, felt and basis, look at this, look at this, you know, forensically in terms of what services we can deliver, and we need to put in a different percentage to safeguard adult services, I, I make a plea, um, given, uh, that somebody will die quite soon, as a direct result of these costs, that we approach it in a far more sophisticated way, manner, and I would go there to do so. The second thing I think we miss in terms of opportunity with this motion is that we need a national campaign. I have somebody mentioned to me the day that they were accepting social services, and certain social services are their ways of getting money, sinking, simply sinking. And that human cost is, think, although, although the desperate lives are being affected in this way, I see no, well, but it's not enough for us to try and combat this individually. We need a well-coordinated national campaign to bring together all of our social community, whether through the LGA or some other means, to bring together, to last together, to fight these progressions to change the government's life. We can't do it on our own. This is a remarkable achievement that we've done in the half past, rightly, not just Mayor Anderson, Mr Calvert, and everything else in the member in this chamber, hardly one's so protective of public services as much we have done, but things that have changed in, that's what promotes this change of response, concentrating on adult social services, for example, all the way through sports and the hours we can save for deep estimate of wasted money spent on adult care or social services.
And councillor, invite the other. Mayor Anderson.
My, my, I'm, I'm, I'm on the amendments.
On the amendments.
All our votes.
Councillor there, would you like to say anything? Or we go straight to the, to the, so the vote is on the amendment, and moved by councillor Paul. All those in favour there? All those against? Are there any abstentions? For the amendment four, against seventy eight, no abstentions, the amendment has lost. Can we move to the main motion? Let's do it by Mayor Anderson.
Well, very, very, we just want to say, um, I missed obviously, um, the amendment being introduced for the law before, but let me tell you, uh, the fact, uh, available to people, um, and it is a fact, that in terms of the sixteen years that I've been a councillor, uh, on this council, I have never seen a more ineffective, uh, superior to requirements group of councillors than the so-called Green Party in this city. Absolutely, absolutely a waste of space, absolutely. I will say one thing, because councillor Radford used the last force to be nice in terms of what I'm trying to, councillor Radford knows, as I have given on many occasions in this chamber, credit to him for participating in the way that this administration to deal with the most, uh, severest attack financially that this city has ever faced. And where people write about this period between two thousand and ten to today, they will remember how this administration has steered this city, not through just the fifty eight percent cuts, but actually forced every single day to keep services going. With other councils across the country, and other cities across the country have closed shore start centres, libraries, and other services, we every single day fight to protect as much of those services as we possibly can. And we've done that with our degrees, and we will continue to do that with our degrees.
The voting is on the main motion. All those in favour? Unanimous, unanimous, everyone. Could I just advise members that item thirteen, that this item has been withdrawn and will be referred directly to the Adult Social Care and Health Select Committee? Therefore, can we move on to item forty, a national curriculum, and I ask Harold Pollan and Jackie Kett to do the motions in their name.
Uh, thank you, comrades. I feel this is a vital, uh, motion, because it deals with the issue of an appropriate curriculum for all our children and young people in the twenty first century, in order that they're able to take their rightful place in our world and in the workplace, and make their contribu- contribution to today's society. I fear that proposed changes and revision of the national curriculum will prevent this. The curriculum will become too narrow. Education was my world for most of my adult life, and when I started teaching, teaching was fun, we had fun in the classroom, and the children learnt, and they made progress. Yes, we were paying schools, but there was no pressure on children in those days, and we compared results and seen what progress they did in it. I loved my job until Mr Go, when his misguided, if all values arrived. I am so cross at what they have done to our education system. And in particular, no can whatsoever is taken into the number of children and young people who are living with hardship, deprivation, and poverty, not only in our city, but also in the country. It's currently three point five million and rising. You cannot learn properly or effectively if you are hungry, if you have no money, if you have no uniform to go to school. Children should not have this pressure put upon them. They go to school to learn. And we need to say thank you as well to all those schools who use their pupil premium effectively to provide the things that these children are lacking, the uniforms and many other things. It's also frightening to see the number of young people attending A A, for so harming and mental health issues. It never happened years and years ago, well, it may do, but not to the extent it is now. This must stop, and now we add a pressure of ninety seven percent attendance. That can be unachievable if these pressures are put on children and young people. This is a government of broken promises. The nineteen forty four Education Act ensured that education was run by the state, and that there were primary schools and secondary schools, and that every child had a right to be taught by a qualified teacher. The Academies Act has destroyed that. This requirement has gone. It was removed in twenty twelve. We no longer have a broad and balanced curriculum. That was removed in the White Paper of twenty ten. And even worse, one of the best initiatives introduced by Charles Clark, our shore start centres, they're gone. By goodness, Liverpool, despite the horrendous budget cuts, have kept them going because they're a vital lifeline to parents and children. Three thousand five hundred shore start centres, there were in twenty ten. There are now less than seven hundred and sixty five, and some of those are not even operating as children's centres, they just give advice. It's criminal. The deregulation of teachers' pay, twenty thirteen, a sixty hour plus working week has meant that fifty thousand, and I repeat that, fifty thousand have left the profession. And now this government wants to teach, to support teachers, to go and source out pay for their skills, where are they going to come from? And many of these teachers are maths teachers and science teachers. It's a disgrace. We also have the abolition of the education maintenance allowance, the trebling of tuition fees, and now we have record numbers of youth unemployment. It's heartbreaking. Liverpool is a vibrant and bright city with many innovative plans for the future. Many developments are planned, and what can we need for the future? We need mechanics, we need builders, electricians, and many, many more to continue this. There's the hospitality industry. Touring, big business here, look at the international business festival. Young people need vocational qualifications to develop these skills to make the city even greater. We've got, we need hotel employees, hairdressers, it's vital, there's many, many more, and it will help our recovery. Today's curriculum is far too narrow. We need these vocational studies. Children and young people can be put off by too much testing. Our schools do well against the arts, thirty seven of them, including special schools, are now deemed to be outstanding, and we also have an effective local authority. Finland, one of the smallest countries in the world, is consistently top or near the top in world rankings of academic achievements. They do not test any child until they are sixteen years old. I enjoyed school, I was academic, my brother wasn't, he turns his eleven plus, he went to secondary school, and he thrived because of all the technical and vocational subjects he was taught there. We need subjects like woodwork, mechanics, technical drawing, coding, computer skills, and anti-radicalisation education. We need a well-rounded education, a full education. We mustn't forget art, music, dance, sport. These are vital. They give children fun, they give them enjoyment. There's an obsession with learning times tables. I have a year six teacher, he was fabulous. Uh, he used to teach children their tables by flicking their fingers, and they used to pick the music that they could click and chime the tables to. It got a bit hairy at one point, because the tune of the day was too bad, and it's okay with the money, we'll come down with a better one. However, it wasn't a naughty tune pack, and the HMI loved it, and went round and asked them about their tables, and they knew them, from one to twelve times. This is what we need. We must all try and engage with the Secretary of State and election members, she was supposed to be the friendly place, face, replacing Mr Go, I don't think so. What did he do? Opened a new Brown School, the rest of the case. So we must all engage with the Secretary of State to ensure that the proposed revision of the curriculum is appropriate to current needs of all our children and young people. She needs to speak to teachers, and importantly, she needs to engage with young people and speak to them, and she needs to speak to us. We must all challenge her. It's the future of our young people that's stayed here. I urge you to support this motion.
Councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The main reason I wanted to speak tonight was to imagine pay tribute to the work of our policy councillor, Elo, in moving on this motion. Councillor Elo is well respected for the work she has done to promote education within the council, but also her commitment and dedication as a primary head teacher for many years, improving the lives of countless children and families emotionally. Lord Mayor, it's essential that our city's children are engaged in these duties. Learning is simple, it's accumulating facts, and we need to take them to a test. Learning is about feeling inspired. It's as much about enjoyment as emotional assessment. If we want our young people to be able to use the knowledge they gain from school, we need to make their learning experience sustainable. That's why in Liverpool, we strive to put the students at the heart of our policymaking and devise initiatives that bring the classroom to life, rather than just focusing on what pays well to the committee. Our two flagship educational programmes, Liverpool Council and City Reader, have one thing in common, they both have students' engagement at their core, promoting reading and literacy for pleasure across all ages. Nothing for it is conventional, it's not about students sitting in rows, it's about active learning. Students feel empowered to choose their own reading areas and feel empowered to actually go on their own song and music programme. When we dealt with Elo, there are schools in A A that we all represent, and every day embodied creative teaching and learning. One crime, you're not parking here, very important now, has the school dot com that the children read to. Now, if people can see an approach like this being advocated by the government, what I would propose to people, certainly like us, when it comes to reading time. Lord Mayor, our approach is paying off. In Liverpool, when I'm in National Office now, with eighty percent of our young people achieving level four, lots of reading, writing, and maths, what are achievements? That's down to the hard work of creativity, of putting into people, as they do to us as well as our levels. Now, Lord Mayor, would it be nice if the government stopped this hard approach at a national level, and put forward a curriculum that shoots engagements at the top? A curriculum that's not only relevant, but actually fielded to young people up and down the country? That would be the true test of a modern fifth grade person, would it?
Can I just advise members that there has to be two amendments. Councillor Erica Kent, are you going to move your amendments?
Lord Mayor, yes.
Is there a second?
A second reserve, I think.
Thank you, Lord May. Well, what can I say? Everything I wanted to say has just been said. My little story too is one of a young boy who I used to teach, I always taught children who were always easy to teach. And bless him, he tried hard, he gave everything he could possibly give every day, but there was no way that he would ever achieve a huge amount in terms of what he could do in terms of reading and writing, but he achieved everything that he set out to do. And yet, it broke my heart when he actually had to sit down and do his year six SATs. I could have said exactly what mark he was going to get. Any teacher who was a good teacher and did good teacher assessments could have said in advance. And yet, that lad had to sit there for forty minutes looking at a test paper that he knew every time he turned the page, it was, it was a social machine shrieking out to him, you're not going to get this, you're not going to be able to do this. And he turned the page and he tried again with the next one, you're not going to do this, and he couldn't. And after about twenty minutes, we decided between us, because with the group I had, they were allowed to do their SATs tests in a separate room so that when we were convinced they were finished, you could pack them away. And in the end, he closed his test paper and he put his paper down, he came down. And I said, are you done? I won't mention his name. He said, I know this. I said, I think you've done good, let's call him friend. And he said, yes, yes. He said, I didn't cry, did I? And I thought, there is no way I can ever recall the fact that this lad has had to sit there for twenty minutes, being tormented by something that he knew he couldn't do and he didn't cry. That was his big achievement. So yes, if I could do away with a whole load of testing for some children and use teacher assessment, then I would. Education in our northern cities, in seaside towns, in the city of London, in our rural areas, children are very different to me. They need a curriculum that's appropriate for them. We do have that in places, Ederton Free Schools, I saw and did a lot of work with last year. They are, they are allowed flexibility in the curriculum. And if we can do that with one school, why can't we do it with others? My addendum is, it supports the amendment, it supports motion, it's not a demand, I don't agree, it's just, it provides a mechanism, a little suggestion to let's help make that work. So in many ways, it's a little add-on rather than an add-on. I don't like this bit, so let's cut it out. I do hope that it supports the addendum. I certainly support what you're trying to do this afternoon. Thank you, Lord May.
To be honest, on the amendment, if the mover is willing to delete the first paragraph and at the end of your second line where it says, accordingly, accordingly, it requests the children's services committee to work with teachers unions and parents, local and national bodies, to review the national curriculum system to see whether approaches could be made to change the system as a whole, it would all on the same sheet. I just don't think that, you know, start it with the way it goes about the approach that it suggests in the first paragraph is appropriate, we'll take that on board, it'll be discussed at the select committee, but in general, I think we'll...
Is that, is that a break?
Lord May, can I take it that the councillor is happy with what's effectively now revised composite part of that motion to which we've now got a second amendment to discuss?
Another break? So moving on to the second amendment by councillor Brown. Second amendment.
This motion contains a strong point regarding the national curriculum and the education module. In particular, I think it's important that we look at today to write about their music, art and sport and these are often seen as being less important to the more academics of the time, so in case. However, the motion permits to mention a major trend for mammal condescension of children in early years adulthood. Forests, school leaders, it's an outstanding model of nationally and internationally. This type of education is generally a tremendous challenge to children of all ages. To define this integrational process across children, young people, regular opportunities to achieve and develop, we could handle that in a completely valid way. Analysis of the specific benefits of woodland-based learning can provide further advantages for children who are elderly or hardly educated in this way. Physical development, regular outdoor activities such as playing, jumping, flying etc. constitutes much more physical development for children than the necessity nature of the majority of school-based education and children's traditional experience. This is an important element in the aging of the complexity crisis that surrounds the world. Personal, social and emotional development. Well-being is a important educational aim and access to the older environments helps children achieve that by giving them the freedom to read, their own time and providing them the opportunity for risks and challenges. Communication skills, experience is demonstrated for speaking and language skills, well developed in the older environments. I personally visited a church at school last year, the nursery actually, in our school. And I was impressed by what I saw there in the local system. And I was impressed by the, also the quality of teaching and the children themselves as well. Just the reasons I love this, as I have proposed the amendments in front of you today, I hope that you will go forward as a commitment to this council, to support the agenda, to promote your seeking to promote the education module, the development of forest schools and the overall outdoor environment.
Could I ask the members to be brief, we are nearing the end of the time allocated for this motion. Councillor next, Paul?
Thank you, Lord May. I think this is the end of the book tonight around the national curriculum and around what we're doing in education in Liverpool. I think it is disappointing that the group have moved this in amendments. This is within another motion, this motion that's going to select committee, it will be the team to discuss issues around forest schools and woodland-based learning. But I think this is an example of the group's jumping on another bandwagon rather than talking about what we're actually doing in Liverpool. I think if the group could actually look at what we're doing on woodland schools, on forest schools at the moment, we are engaging with Mayor's Forest, we're working on that, councillor, Moby's doing a lot of work on that, councillor Orr's doing a lot of work in parks, promoting reading in parks, which is a really good initiative. But we've already got a forest school in Liverpool, Windsor School in Liverpool Lake, which is one of our outstanding schools, is a forest school, we're already doing that. The mayor's building twelve new schools, one of them, several of them is, what a woodland-based learning environment, which you would think the group would have supported, but have stood in the way that still happens with other people. I think that's good, I'm glad, Lord May. This is a serious debate, we are doing things on this. Don't try and jump on the bandwagon, just work with us and we can all work together on this.
Councillor Paul?
Yeah, I think this motion, Lord May, also gives a suggestion that many of the things that they're talking about aren't already happening in schools around PE and around the challenges that we've got. They are happening, people are learning, people are getting opportunity to prepare themselves for the economy for the future, not just in terms of the skills that are needed, but in terms of some of the other things that are happening here as well. I just can't believe this, this motion from the group. Councillor Small says it really is a bandwagon, it does very little to equip our children with challenges and what the national curriculum will do for the future.
Okay, so the voting is on the amendment. I see my first, councillor, you have to be fine.
Uh, thank you. I do think this is a very important motion because it is the future development of all our young people and children. I accept...
Councillor, this is on the amendment moved by councillor?
Oh, sorry. I think the amendment moved by councillor Brown, I would not accept for all the reasons that have been said. There are forest schools in place, I heard about one in Windsor Street, so no, I would accept this amendment.
Okay, so voting is on the amendments. All those in favour? All those against? Are there any abstentions? Four, the amendment five, against seventy-six, no abstentions, the amendment's lost. And I'll go to the main motion and I've got councillor Rachel O'Gorman who has to speak and for that to be learned briefly, we're nearing the end of our time on this particular motion, thank you.
Very, very, very respectful, May. I just wanted to echo what councillor Orr said so brilliantly. I had dyslexia dyspraxia, and school wasn't always the best time for me and not always the fullest time. And don't forget we started on that, so I still have quite a few of my parents trying to make fractions and times tables full in eleven and I'm in trouble with them. But I think that I was very lucky at the time that I went to school on the level of woodland. And I had teachers who had a little bit more freedom to encourage me to read for pleasure, which I still do now and has helped me hugely. My reading comprehension went up, my understanding on my way to make an argument and with speed has improved and continues to improve as a result of it. And I, I just worry for students who do have dyslexia and dyspraxia like myself, will not have that opportunity for the joy of being able to read and be touched, to be read to, to have that fun of really getting lost in a book and really having that understanding. And I, I think that to lose that is to lose a great thing. And I know that in the city, we are doing such brilliant work on this, led by councillor Orr who is really taking the fun into schools of reading and working with these organisations, working with these leaders, which is just fantastic. But we need that freedom in schools and we need kids who are told or think that they're rich, they, and they're stupid because they've got dyslexia, that they're not, that they're fantastic, that they're creative, that they're imaginative, that they have all these other skills. Because to say, to say in an exam, and I don't want this before, sorry, to say to me and Pam and think that you are beneath your classmates is just the most appalling thing. And I completely agree with councillor Ken when she says in him that that's not okay. And that's what this government is pushing children to do, to think that they are less than they are not. Every child matters and that is something I am so proud of the Labour Government to introduce. It is something that this Tory government is finding that is not acceptable. And so, everybody, support this motion and strike for people.
Councillor Paul, you have to be fine.
I'd be very grateful. We just need to get this government out and then we get... And then we have proper governments who knows what children and young people need today.
The voting is on the main motion, all those in favour? Mayor Anderson, thank you. Motion fifty, registered in Liverpool, can you drive councillor Orr, others, and the motion standing in his name?